...Garden and some cosponsored events around the Blue Line Extension. So if you're curious to learning more about our organization, feel free to look us up on Facebook. That's Heritage Park Neighborhood Association. I'm going to pass the mic over to John Jameson. He is the NERC Board Chairman and he will introduce everyone up here for you.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, everybody's alive. First off, welcome to the Fifth Ward's candidate forum, excuse me, with all the candidates up here. I can get it right, thank you. And I want to, you know, just one, give you a really warm welcome. And I'm the Board Chairman for North Side Residential Redevelopment Council. And obviously, this is in our district. So once again, I want to thank you for making it out. And as you know, we have a lot of engagement going on with the light rail, so please stay tuned to our website at nrc.org. And stay abreast and come out and please participate in all that because we're going to need your input. That being said, I want to welcome Pam to lean to the stage here to introduce the candidates and give her a warm welcome, everyone. Thank you.
Well, I too will welcome you. And second, that thank goodness we don't have any rain or that wind that we had earlier today. We are also being sponsored, this forum is being sponsored by the League of Women Voters. And I have to give my plug for the league. It is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. It works to increase understanding of major policy issues and influences public policy through education and advocacy. We do not support specific candidates or parties. Tonight, you're going to hear from five candidates. There are six candidates and five are here tonight. They are running for the City Council position for the Fifth Ward. The Fifth Ward is located in north central part of Minneapolis and it is primarily made up of residential neighborhoods. It's situated on the banks of the Mississippi River. It is home to the historic Capri Theater, the Lundstrom Performing Arts Center, and the Minneapolis Farmers Market. The Minneapolis Urban League offices are located here as well as the University of Minnesota Research and Outreach Center. It is home to seven great parks, such as the one that we're in tonight. And it is a great place to live and you are going to meet people who are here to tell you why they would like to represent it. I want to thank all of the candidates for being here tonight. And I'm going to name them from this side to the other. Earlier tonight, they drew numbers and that's why they're sitting not alphabetically, but they're sitting by the numbers that they drew. We have Crystal Porter, Jeremiah Ellison, Elijah, Norris Holliday, Kathy Spahn, and Victor Armando Martinez. As it was said earlier, my name is Pam Tlin and I will be the moderator tonight. We are also joined by Jane Papa Giorgio and Nancy Shafer, who are taking questions. So if you have a card and you would like to ask a question, hold it up and Nancy over here will come and pick up the question and give it to me. And if we have time, we'll try to get to it. We also have our timekeeper Whitney Larson, who is down here, and she'll be keeping our candidates on time. We have been asked by Fairboat, which has a table over in this direction, to just give you a quick announcement. And then if you have any questions, they'd be happy to answer them throughout the evening. Minneapolis has ranked choice voting elections. There is not a primary election. You have the power to rank your candidates in the order of your preference on the November ballot. As you hear the candidates tonight, consider not just your first choice, but also your second and your third choice. To submit a question anonymously, you can go to our Facebook page and push the blue button and fill out a question. And Jane will get it here on our computer. Please do not address any of your questions to a specific candidate. All questions will be asked of all of the candidates. The format for the evening will be as follows. Each candidate will get one and one-half minutes for an opening statement and then we will move to questions. Each candidate will then get up to one minute to answer the question. In the middle, we will have a quick round of rapid questions, only three, in which they will get 20 seconds to answer. And then we will end with one-minute closing remarks by each candidate. We'll go in the same order each time, but each question will be answered by a different person first. Okay. Candidates, you now have one and a half minutes to introduce yourselves and to tell us why you are running for City Council. And we will start with Crystal.
Hi, my name is Crystal Porter. For those of you who don't know me, I am the head coach for gymnastics at North Henry and Edison High Schools. I'm also the founder and executive director of MN Renewable Now. I have lived here my whole life. I've raised my children and now my children are raising their children here in North Minneapolis. I love this community so much. When I was young, when I was 14, I had to leave home. And I had my first child at 14 years old. And that was very difficult, but it also put me in a position to where I understand what a lot of people are going through in North Minneapolis. We have a very low AMI in this community, in many of these neighborhoods. And I know what it feels like to be in that situation. But I also know that there is a way out. I am now a landlord, homeowner. Like I said, I founded a nonprofit. I ran as the Executive Director of Cleveland Neighborhood Association for some years. And I know how the city runs. I have a relationship with almost every single department in the city. I could go into any department and know people everywhere. I have a deep relationship with many people in this community. And I know a lot of people here right now in this park and just know that I love you very much and I plan to work with you and to fight with you to make sure that North Minneapolis becomes the community we deserve.
Thank you. I'll let you clap for the opening statements and then after that, I'm going to ask for you to hold your applause because we have a lot of questions and we don't want to be here until it gets so dark we can't read them. Okay, our next person is Jeremiah.
Thank you so much. My name is Jeremiah Ellison. I am the current Ward Five City Council member. And you know, when I ran a couple of years ago, you know, I ran on a platform of defending the people that needed the most defense on the North Side. And that really starts with the people who have made this place their home. We face a lot of gentrification pressures and displacement pressures here on the North Side. And so I really spent my first couple of years in office addressing those issues, working on issues of affordable housing, working on issues of homelessness, working on issues of job creation, wealth creation, and also making sure that it's not only that we have a focus on affordable housing, but that we have options in our neighborhood to create the kind of neighborhood that we deserve. And we deserve a neighborhood where we can have jobs that pay a fair wage for our work. We deserve a neighborhood where small businesses get to own the corridor. To that end, I've not only supported, you know, green energy job training, but I've also supported, I've also supported making sure that we had, that our businesses had access to buying up the corridor and we're seeing that work begin. You know, I'll get a chance later tonight to talk about environmental issues and other issues that I'm focused on, but I want to be sent back to City Hall to continue that work. Thank you.
Thank you. Elijah.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Elijah Norris Holliday. I'm 25 years old. I have a master's degree in public administration and also a specialization in public budget and finance. I've worked in a political space for about seven years. I've helped a handful of candidates gain office. I'm also a social entrepreneur. I'm the CEO and founder of Project Restore Minnesota. We're a community-based organization that specializes with the development of young ADOS, young people, 18 to 25 years old. And we do consulting work with Ramsey and Hennepin County. I'm running for Ward Five City Council because I believe that the North Side deserves more. I believe our young people deserve more. We have so many young people here, in fact, thousands the most in any other ward in the city of Minneapolis, and yet I see no jobs and opportunities for them. And it's the reason why we see the high crime in the community. They're not being engaged, they're not being talked with, they're being talked at, and they're not being properly supported. I want to use my resources, my skills, my network to offer that support. I have a very simple platform. I want to connect jobs and opportunities. I don't believe a city council member creates jobs. I believe their job is to connect the jobs. And that's what I seek to do. I seek to regain and repower our police department by working closely with Chief Arredondo and the mayor to come up with formidable solutions to fight against crime. And my last thing is I want to engage, employ, and empower the thousands of young people who live and call the North Side home. I hope that I'm able to persuade you all to support my campaign after I answer these questions and give you my opinions on the topics that we're going to discuss here today. Thank you all.
Thank you. Kathy.
Good evening. My name's Kathy Spahn. And I am currently the Executive Director of Jordanary Community Council. And I was reluctant to come here tonight because this is the day after the anniversary of George Floyd's death. That really bothered me that we would have, do business as usual. So this is not business as usual for me. I feel I am a hostage in my community, I am a hostage in my house. We are, we have a violence, a pandemic of violence. I'm running because this community has been abandoned. I am running on a simple platform, just like Elijah. It is really about public safety for me. It is about housing for me. It is about employment opportunities for me. I have spent 25 years of my life working and living in this community and I love the North Side. I love this North Side. But yet, we are under a pandemic of violence and we have to admit that, we have to have ownership of that, and we have to decrease the violence so that jobs will be brought into our community. So there are employment opportunities for people, so businesses are attracted to the North Side. And yet, we are here today and I am here with you to work with you and for you. That's why I'm running for Minneapolis City Council.
Thank you. Victor.
Hello, everybody. My name is Victor Armando Martinez. I've been on the North Side for 17 years, graduated from Patrick Henry High School right up the road here. So I hope some of you guys don't hold that against me. I'm running because last year, a lot of things were said in our city council and a lot of things were said in our leadership that began to affect my family, my church, my friends' businesses in the community. And I took October of last year to talk to about 100 people on the North Side, principals, teachers. I was also the vice chair of NERC that's helping host this event and got to know a lot of the key leaders in the community. And I'd asked them, why does it feel for 17 years, we've been talking about safety and prosperity for the North Side since I've been here? And people that have been around longer than I've been alive said, Victor, we've been asking for that since 1967. And so then my issue became the people's issue. People want the basic fundamentals of life. They want to feel safe in their parks, they want to feel safe in their community. We want to rehab, we have the worst business corridor in the city of Minneapolis. And we've had that for decades. And so my platform is very simple. Curbing crime through youth diversion and community empowerment. And number two, rehabbing West Broadway once and for all for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll begin with the questions for the evening and the candidates have up to a minute to respond. The first topic, as you can imagine, is public safety and policing. With this topic top in mind of most of the city of Minneapolis, what problems or issues with policing and public safety do you view as the most important? And begin with Jeremiah.
Thank you for the question. I think one of the number one problems that we face here is that we struggle to connect the very different aspects that create our community, that create a safe community, with one another. You talk about policing, you talk about violence prevention, you talk about mental health response. We only have really, in the history of Minneapolis, in 150 years of Minneapolis, one response to all of those issues. And it's a police-only model. And every city in the country, every major city in the country, has this police-only model. And we see, you know, Kathy mentioned George Floyd. We see the results of this. We see that crime continues to rise. We see that violence happens in our community. And so I think that we need collaboration, not only with this police-only model, but we need to create alternative responses to emergencies that don't require an armed response. And we need to really meld those things with our policing response. That's what I've been advocating for. I know the conversation's gotten way outside of that, but that's what I've been advocating for and I feel like we've got a plan to make that happen.
Thank you. Elijah.
Yeah, I believe that the biggest issue is we have a lot of self-serving, self-righteous, arrogant leaders right now in our communities who believe that they have all the answers to community problems. And they say that they want to collaborate, but their actions don't show us that they want to collaborate. I believe that the community does have the answer to solving the issues with public safety and crime in our community. And if properly funded, they would actually be able to have the tools and resources necessary to carry out their mission to stop violent crime in our community and build relationships with our police officers. I believe that collaboration with Chief, Police Chief Arredondo, Precinct Commander Charlie Adams, and our mayor is going to be the first step in us being able to actually achieve a better relationship between our police and our community. But first, we're going to have to elect some leaders in our community who are not going to be arrogant, self-righteous, and think that they know all the answers to the community's problems. They have to be willing to work with the community to form those solutions.
Thank you. Kathy.
On June 7th of last year, our city council members said that they would dismantle and defund our Minneapolis Police Department. That started the issue. The issue really is, we need intervention, prevention, and healing. We do know that the Minneapolis Police Department, yes, it is fundamentally dysfunctional, yes it is, but we need reform. And I'm going to tell you, when people talk about mental health and supportive services, I totally support that. But there is no mental health worker that is going to come to your household if you are in a crisis because they need the household to be safe in order for them to come, in order for them to provide the services that are needed. So the reality is, it started with the dismantling and the defunding of the Minneapolis Police Department. So let's just say that and call that for what it is. We have a police department that definitely needs to be reformed. But not only is this a city council issue, this is a Hennepin County issue, this is a state issue. But the reality is, is that our city council needs to hold some responsibility for the fact that they have started the chaos. And instead of having a both-and approach, they had an either-or approach which started chaos. So let's be real.
Thank you. And Victor.
The problem that we have in North Minneapolis right now is that there's a deterioration of trust between the police and the community. Our job as city representatives should be about mending and healing the community and working together. Cities that historically have a problem with the police and the community are cities that historically struggle with crime in the community. In 1967, there was a study done in Newark, New Jersey, and they found out that yes, there is disparities in the police department, but it went deeper than that. When a community struggle with a public education system, when communities struggle with low opportunities for our young people, when there's low resources, when there's things in the community, you could change the whole police force, but if you don't change the inequities in the community, you're just changing the top and you're still getting the same results. I believe in an upstream solution, whereas in policing, you deal with issues upstream, which costs a lot of money to invest, but we need to stop and filter the biopsies before they get to the community. And number two, when it comes to community and young people, we need to help them before they become homeless, drug addicts, before they become a minister society. We've got to get to them sooner rather than later when it becomes a lot harder.
Thank you. Crystal.
So honestly, I think we have a lack of employment in North Minneapolis. Unemployment is inextricably linked to crime. We have empty lots up and down our business corridors that are owned by the city of Minneapolis that should have businesses there and patrons there keeping an eye on the ground. We have youth that are left alone for hours because their parents are taking three buses outside of the community to work. We need a coalition of groups and organizations that offer programming to youth to get together and reach the families. We need to bring back the community engagement department at the Minneapolis Police Department. We also need to push the fact that all of you here can join the community safety officer program at no cost to you to boost the amount of Minneapolis residents that would be on the force. And yes, I definitely support police reform. It needs to happen.
Thank you. Our next question is also about public safety. We know that black people are more likely to be stopped by the police for routine traffic violations and that those stops are likely to result in harm. With that in mind, what are the most important changes that you would like to see from the Minneapolis Police Department during traffic stops? Elijah?
I would like to see a fully funded cadet program that actually is able to go into the high schools and introduce young people in the community to become police officers. I would love to see more black young people becoming police officers in this community. And hopefully, they come back and actually serve this community. Oftentimes, they do not for other reasons. I believe that that'll be the first step in also helping us repair the relationships that we have with our police and our community members. Why not have a pilot program that we can start in the high school to get these young people introduced to what it means to actually be a police officer? I think there's also a lot of misconceptions about what it means to actually serve your community as a police officer. Why don't we take the time and the energy to try to clear up some of that misconception? That would be my first, my first initiative that I actually would like to pilot.
Thank you. Kathy.
I really want to see the community engagement team of the Minneapolis Police Department returned back to the Minneapolis Police Department. I want to eliminate where police officers are pulling people over for the fact that their tabs have been expired. I really want that to change. We have to change the culture of policing and the way it is done. It has to start with training that happens at the level when they are first introduced to policing. I want to see those things stop. I want police officers to be engaged in this community. I also want to see police officers live in the community. I really want that to become a law, that they are part of this community, they live in this community. From January 1st, 2020 to January 15th, 2021, we had 2,284 incidents of violence. And I'm going to tell you something, our police department is not equipped to deal with all of the violence that happens in this community. I want a culture that really does reflect, how do they, how are they trained? How are they trained with de-escalation? How are they trained with conflict management? They need to be trained much better than what they are currently right now. And one of the things I want them to stop doing is that I want them to stop stopping people because of miscellaneous types of incidents so that death does not occur. I want that to cease.
Thank you. Victor.
When you give a community of young people, 35% of North Minneapolis is under the age of 18. That's 20,000 young people. I've been a youth pastor for 10 years, a lead pastor for seven years. When young people in the community see the business corridor that we have, buildings tagged up, empty 20 storefronts boarded up, not clean, dirty, unsafe, when you provide that to young people as their environment, it's bad for their health, it's bad for their mind, it's bad for their heart. And I believe that if we give our community a better business corridor, a better community where they can belong and participate, we need to, I believe, in a youth development front because we need to be able to provide resources to young people like never before. We have the least amount of resources for our community for young people and we need to help them before it gets too late. I really believe in beat officers. When I talk to people that have been here a long time, they tell me, I remember beat officers, they build a good relationship with us, bring them back.
Thank you. Crystal.
There is a cadet program offered to our youth currently in the high schools, yet it's not talked about. We lost the PAL program as well, that offered programs to our youth. We lost BiCOPS for kids that helped 75 of my youth employees receive bikes and helmets. I also would like to see offers represent our community, not just look like us, but be us, be our neighbors. And those who are not are required to get out of their cars, get to know us, and spend time volunteering in our community. I just spoke with the Park Board Commissioner today and he said that they cannot find anybody to work in some of these parks that do not have rec centers. I was at Cleveland Park just a couple days ago where kids are fighting every day and there's trash everywhere. What would it look like if we got some of these officers that we need more of to start volunteering their time in these parks and spending time with these kids?
Thank you. Elijah. I'm sorry. Jeremiah.
Jeremiah, thank you. The truth is that we need accountability and without accountability, nothing else is going to work, quite frankly. I want to let folks know that this is the third highest budget that the police, that the Minneapolis Police Department has ever had in the history of our city. That's this year, the third highest budget it's ever had in its history. And that's after a pandemic that put millions of people out of work, after a huge budget shortfall that required the city to cut $63 million out of the budget. And the problems that we're facing this year aren't a result of one year, but actually, we've seen, we've seen, as we've seen wealth inequality grow, we've seen violence grow. We're on a six-year trend. Now, things are, things have, were exacerbated, I think, by the pandemic, but we need accountability. We're under investigation by the Minnesota Department of Human Rights, our police department, not the city, the police department. We're under investigation by the Department of Justice at the US. Our department is under investigation by two levels of government for a pattern and practice of discrimination. This problem is much deeper than us building relationships. We need accountability. All the training in the world, all the relationships in the world will not work if you don't have accountability.
Thank you. Okay, our next question comes from the audience and it was also one similar to it sent in earlier. How will you address the recent rise in gun violence in our neighborhoods and how would you balance overpolicing with the recent rise in gun violence? And we began with Kathy.
Currently, right now, what we're doing is three, a three approach. One is intervention. It's take back the block. I'm working with churches, the community, grassroots agencies, and actually having people take back the block. And that is looking at the hotspots that the Minneapolis Police Department has identified are notorious hotspots. And we all know where they are. We know that it's the Amstar. We know that it's Merwin's gas station. The next approach is, we are going to do prevention, intervention then prevention. And prevention is really trying to provide resources for individuals if they need a job, if they need housing, we need to match that. The third approach is really healing. We need to heal this community. That's what really needs to be done. We need to take back this community ourselves. Police come after there is an incident, but as a community, we have a responsibility to take back our community.
Thank you. Victor.
My church is one of the churches that are doing the 21 Days of Peace. We came out there with a church this Monday for the first day. We took over Merwin's. Half the people left there because of our presence. And I saw an artist painting a sanctuary. He had a young man with him that said, hey, I need something to do positively in the community. And he helped him draw. We were talking about this amazing experience right behind me. Two, three guys start running, two, three African-American males, young males. And right behind him, I see a guy, a young Somali male, come out with a gun in his hand, chasing them point-blank. My kids were there, my church was there, me and my brother were there. We yelled out, there's kids here, there's kids here, there's kids here. The guy stopped, ran back into his car and chased them out there. All 10 cars started running everywhere. It was pandemonium. The young man that was drawing there said, hey, they just told me that there's about to be a war right here, get out of here. He helped me throw everything in my church bus, get out of there. I called 911, took 50 seconds to answer, 50 seconds to answer, that's almost a minute. Drive down the block, there was an accident, car was taking there. Let me tell you something, it's a short-term solution, but we need more cops.
Thank you. Crystal.
Last year, we had some amazing brothers right here in Homewood and Willard Hay that were taking care of all of us. And we felt very safe because of it during the civil unrest. They were intercepting vehicles. Last year, we had some amazing brothers right here in Homewood and Willard Hay that were taking care of all of us, and we felt very safe because of it during the civil unrest. They were intercepting vehicles and towing them out of our community, finding out later on that the trunks were filled with flammable materials. We need to find resources for them. I support the, the plan that's going on right now with the Community Safety Program. We are all signing up and we're showing up on different corners and different hotspots. I do support that. I've actually signed up myself, and if you guys want to find out on how to do that, I can help you do that later. But we do need to be more present. We do need to start developing strong relationships with our neighbors. We need, whenever we're outside, we need to be saying hello, we need to get to know each other, we need to know each other's childrens, children, our dogs, everybody. You know, it's, it's not okay that we're living in a time right now where everything's social media, everything's online, we need to reconnect.
Thank you. Jeremiah?
Uh, right now, we're, we're facing, uh, quite frankly, in our community, we're facing a gun violence crisis that involves groups who are in a cycle of revenge. That's what we're facing right now. Uh, there are folks in the community who, uh, know who some of these groups are, even if they don't know who the individual actors are, and you're seeing some of that work. You know, you're seeing, uh, Reverend McAfee out there with others to do some of that direct intervention. Um, and, and we do need, you know, uh, uh, we do need the police in, in, as the, especially as the only system we have, to engage and partner with those, uh, with those entities to make sure that we can solve the immediate crisis. But we've, sorry about the noise. We, you met, a few people have mentioned up, up here about employment and about jobs, and I just want to remind folks that the pandemic put 40 million people out of work. And even as people have started to get more work, uh, people are, don't have the same level of benefits, they're not having the same kind of income. If we do not solve some of these upstream problems, which I believe we're addressing, and I had more than a minute, I could go directly into it, but we need to solve some of these upstream, upstream problems, or we're gonna keep feeding this system that keeps people in a cycle of, uh, of violence.
Thank you. Elijah?
Yeah, first I want to say, we need leaders who are not gonna go out and react to situations and tragedies out of emotions. The situation that Victor just described to me makes me sad that there were kids out there at that time at a known hotspot where we know multiple shootings happen sometimes on a weekly basis, sometimes daily basis. To put children in harm's way like that and community members does not seem like an appropriate response to the tragedies that we're facing as it relates to gun violence. So I would not take an emotional response. Now, to deal with the issue of getting guns out of the hands of young people, simple, I'll put it simply like this, jobs and opportunities need to be more accessible than a gun in a pound of weed. If you're not talking about putting money into bank accounts, money into pockets, then stop it. Just, just give it up, walk away. You're not gonna stop the gun violence until we get money into the pockets of these young people, get them on a path where they can become successful and empowered. And you know what? I might, this might come back and bite me in the butt, but I'm gonna agree with something that Jeremiah said, Councilman Ellison said. We do need, uh, more investment in mental health services. A lot of our young people are struggling with mental health issues. A lot of our young people are dealing with addiction. I have friends who are addicted to Xanax, lean, weed, and those are feeling their negative decisions that they're making. This is a reality that our young black kids are facing. They're addicted to these drugs and we need to help get them off of it.
Answer some of these questions, I think.
Everyone else also on the, excuse me ma'am, everyone else on the stage actually got to go longer than me. That was my first time extending past my time.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, if you're gonna interrupt me, just make sure you interrupt everyone else as well. Thank you.
I try to keep it as, as close as I can, I'm sorry. Okay. Um, all right, the next question also is about public safety. What specific duties would you want to see included as part of a public safety unit in Minneapolis and kind of along that same way? Do you think that the city council is going to be able to control the Minneapolis police or that they will even listen to the city council? And Victor, you go first.
I am opposed to the city charter amendment for one reason, one reason only. When a chief of police has to answer to 14 people in a crisis situation, it's going to take us to, from a very bad year this summer to a very even worse of the next. The chief of police, when there's an incident, think of it in your own homes, think about it in your jobs. If there's not a direct line of, of accountability of one person to be able to do work, think of how many times in your job where you have to report to 20 different, 15 different, 10 people and don't get a straight answer. If our city council is dysfunctional right now, divided, they're getting a quarter of a billion dollars and they don't even know, they don't have a consensus of how to use that with the mayor yet, and we're already getting kids, three children shot in the head, if we can't even get that done, and a, and a chief has to answer now to 14 people, that makes me very worried.
Thank you. All right, now we will, um, switch to 20-second responses, and so there won't be a warning, you'll just get a stop sign. I'm sorry. He had more time?
No.
Oh, I, I knew that would happen.
I appreciate it though, thank you.
My system here didn't, I have totally apologized. Kristel, do you want me to ask the question again, or are you okay?
Uh, no, that's fine.
Okay.
So I would actually like to see police officers serve in our community in different capacities, not just on duty and off duty. Uh, why do I only see officers, uh, working, um, in their vehicles and as off duty at a, at a liquor store, uh, a grocery store? I would like to see officers volunteering at the food shelf, volunteering at the library, at the parks. That's when we actually get to develop those relationships, and we don't just see them as somebody that's law and order, we also start to see them as a friend, as somebody that's part of our neighborhood. And I also support in funding and investing into these groups that are out here keeping us safe, our neighbors who are out here and has kept us safe throughout the year of 2020 and through 2021.
Okay, thank you. Jeremiah?
Yes, thank you. Um, you know, anybody who, who acts like the, uh, the Minneapolis City Council is gonna be managing the day-to-day of any department is, quite frankly, is not informed. The way that the Minneapolis City Council works in every other department except the police, uh, is that we have legislative authority. We set the agenda, we pass policies, and we don't have that level of control with police. So if you want, you know, people think that, uh, we should ban chokeholds in the city of Minneapolis. Well, the Minneapolis City Council can't do that currently, not in any way that's transparent. Uh, people think that we should ban, uh, no-knock rates. Well, the city Minneapolis, well, the city council can't do that currently because there's no legislative authority. The mayor and the chief are still gonna run the day-to-day of the department the same way that, uh, the Director of CPED runs, uh, Community Planning and Economic Development. And I think that to that end, we should have unarmed traffic stops, uh, in our city so that we can have traffic enforcement, but without the threat of, 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 of a killing the way that we saw with Dante Wright. I think that we need mental health response in our city. I think that we need, uh, uh, I think that we also need violence prevention so that we can get intel and, and, and get ahead of some of these issues, uh, uh, before we're solving a murder, so.
Okay, thank you. Elijah?
Can I have you quickly repeat the question for me so I can make sure I answer it completely?
I will try to if I can find it here. What specific duties would you want to see included as part of a public safety, um, department in Minneapolis and, um, it had a second part to it, which I have, I think I've had three other, other things added here. And why do you think that the city council can control the Minneapolis police? Um, do you think they would listen to the city council?
Um, I'll answer the second part first. I don't think that the police officers or the department would listen to city council given the current rhetoric that's being pushed out there right now and the current relationship or the lack thereof that currently exists between our police department and our city council members. So no, I don't think that relationship would work. To answer the first part, I believe that city council members should focus on legislating and policymaking and ensuring that our community members are receiving the proper support, our neighborhood organizations are receiving the proper support that they need to carry out their duties. And I believe that the mayor and the chief, Arredondo, should focus on policing and making sure that we have a police department that's respectful of our community, um, that can provide the necessary support to our community and is a representation of what our community members, or what our community is. Um, I do believe that we should have mandatory volunteering hours in our police department. I agree with Kristel when she said that. Uh, I think it makes sense for a police officer to be able to take off their uniform and go volunteer at the local food shelves, go volunteer at the local community centers, and actually start building more relationships with the young people that live here and the residents that live here.
Okay, thank you. Kathy?
I oppose, uh, creating a new public safety department that hires a commissioner, that hires a deputy of policing. I oppose that. I support a public safety model that really is about intervention, prevention, and healing. Um, I support having a public safety department that reflects the community in which they serve. Uh, our current city council is, uh, they, they do not support our current Minneapolis Police Department. What I want to say to you is that I believe that we should create a criminal justice task force, a task force that includes judges, lawyers, probation, police, and citizens because the criminal justice system, it is not just the, our eye is on the police department right now, but it's also the criminal justice system that is also demeaning and hurting black and brown bodies right now. What also we don't have a plan for is that $281.5 million is coming into the city and also $245 million is coming into this county. What is the plan that is going to, for that particular money that's gonna help us in this community? I have not heard, what is the plan for those dollars?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, now we will go to the 20-second questions, and there are just three of them, and, um, we just want you to give a, a brief, obviously, 20-second answer. And, um, what primary, one primary concern with the organization of the city council is its lack of accountability. What changes would you support to provide better accountability? Kristel?
Honestly, I think right now there's a big division between the city council and the mayor right now, and, um, you know, that we, there's a reason why we have a separation of government. We've got the executive, we got the legislative, and we, and we have the, um, we have the judicial. Um, on the state level, oh, sorry, yep, I guess I'm done.
I was watching this so fast. Jeremiah?
You know, uh, we have, uh, an ethics officer and the Ethics Complaint Board, uh, at the city of Minneapolis, um, and when you, if you are a city council member who steps outside of what's appropriate, you're gonna get an ethics violation posted against you, and we've seen in the past, uh, uh, council members who have been arrested or removed from office for violating ethics. Uh, I think that we have a pretty good system of accountability. I do think that people need to know a little bit more about it.
Okay, thank you. Elijah?
Yes, I would implement a Ward Five Comprehensive Plan, much like the one that we have on the city level in which we have community member stakeholders come together, we identify one-year goals, five-year goals, 10-year goals, and et cetera, to really get our community on the right track. I would hope that this would be a trend with all the other wards, and that would be an actual accountability tool that I can take with me to the Office of City Council and other members as well.
Thank you. Kathy?
We need a community report card. Each elected official actually should be graded on whether or not, do they call you back? Do they do what they say? How many times have people said to you, I don't know what they actually do? We need a community report card so that the council members can come back to us and on a quarterly basis and say, this is what I'm working on, this is what I voted on, I need your assistance, and they need to create an advisory council that helps them in their office.
Thank you. Victor?
The ability to recall our city council members would be the number one thing. When the nine council members got on that stage, they violated the open meeting, uh, law that the state of Minnesota has. Ethic violations, sometimes they have no teeth unless you do something really egregious, but that's what I would do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, second question with 20-second answer is, a charter amendment written by the Charter Commission would more clearly define and separate the power in our city government. It would make the mayor the chief executive officer holding administrative and executive authority, and the city council members would act as the legislative body with policymaking and oversight authority. Do you agree with this plan of action? Why or why not? And we begin with Jeremiah.
I don't agree with this plan of action. I think that to take a model that hasn't really worked in managing, uh, one department and apply to every single department in the city is not a good way for us to move forward and govern, uh, and I don't think that it would create accountability or, uh, safer or more, or more prosperous communities.
Thank you. Elijah?
Yes, I do agree with the proposed amendment. Um, I believe that most major cities, much like Minneapolis, already have a system like this. Our mayor across the river, Melvin Carter, has a similar authority. I think he's just making it consistent across the board.
Thank you. Kathy?
I support this, uh, proposal as well. We need a strong mayor system so that he is allowed to make decisions without being stronghold by a city council.
Thank you. Victor?
Have you ever heard the saying, that's why we can't have good things? On this one, I agree on Jeremiah. I wouldn't want to see this happen, but because of the dysfunction of our current city council, that's why we can't have good things, and that's why I support it.
Okay. Um, that's why you started, right?
Yeah.
Kristel?
Um, I actually do agree with this charter amendment. Um, I think that the mayor is supposed to, uh, be the one communicating and leading the department heads, and, um, you know, you just said that the city council is a legislative body, and I wouldn't expect the governor or, uh, member of the House to, to be, um, communicating or leading department heads.
We don't.
Thank you. Good job. See how well they can answer it in 20 seconds? Very good. Okay. The ne, the next one is really a follow-up to the one you just had, so if you didn't have enough time, you can add a couple here. The city council has submitted its own proposal to the Charter Commission that would give the council authority over a new department of public safety rather than the mayor. What do you think, what do, who do you think should have the authority over the peace officers and the police officers in the future of Minneapolis?
You know, it's funny that, uh, the, the state legislature got mentioned because when you do go through your council orientation, what you find out is that the exact system of government that we have at City Hall is, is modeled exactly after our state government, except for when it comes to the police department. And the police department has not been dysfunctional under one mayor, it's been dysfunctional under several. And so I think that it's, it's important that we acknowledge that, and, and the council's not looking to have control over the department, it's looking to have some legislative authority.
Okay, yeah, I think that was actually Elijah's turn to go first, so I'll give you 40 seconds, Elijah, how's that?
It's okay. Again, as I, uh, mentioned earlier, council members should focus on legislating and policymaking and passing a budget. The mayor should oversee the police department alongside with Chief Arredondo. I think that's the best system. We don't need to have a new public safety department that's just making the process convoluted, more difficult, and makes it harder for us to actually get things accomplished and done. Let's make city council simple again. Let's stop creating all these new departments, let's work with what we have, improve it, and make adjustments to, to fit the needs of our community members.
Kathy?
I am opposed, once again, to creating a new public safety department that hires a commissioner, that hires a director, that oversees the Minneapolis Police Department. It would get rid of our Minneapolis, uh, chief of police. We are dysfunctional in our city government right now, and we need more accountability. I am opposed to hiring and creating and hiring commissioners and making it more convoluted than what it is currently right now. We do not need another department.
Thank you. Victor?
I as well oppose this. Uh, I just heard today Betsy Hodges, RT Ryback, and, um, the previous mayor that was there before I was a kid.
Sharon Salzberg.
There you go. And they were talking about how one of the biggest mistakes they made was they never properly passed on the baton. They never asked the outgoing mayor, what did you struggle with and what can I do? And they admitted it on that radio today. That is a problem.
Thank you. Okay. Now we'll go back to our questions, we'll, uh, allow you one minute for the answers, so. Oh, Kristel?
It's okay.
You get 20 seconds for this one.
It's fine. I, I just firmly believe that our mayor and our chief should be responsible for implementing the policies that have been passed by the city council, so I feel that's the way it should be set up.
Okay, thank you. All right. We've had lots of questions come in from our audience, and so I will try to insert one of those right now. This is an education question. What impact does city council have on education funding and what will you do to support education education in the north side of the city?" And Elijah, it's your turn to start.
Yes, I believe that city council, especially the city council member for this ward, needs to be, to do a better job at promoting economic development, making sure that a lot of our residents have access to home ownership. We know that that is one of the, number one, revenue sources for our public education systems, and also making sure we have appropriate funding coming from the state departments as well, and then the federal government, and then actually taking a look at our education systems and figure out where can they cut some of the money there to take those resources and put it more into departments and programs that are actually going to help support our young people. I think there is a lot of waste right now within our public education system, and we need to figure out how we can be better stewards of our budget and create a better future for our young people. But it starts with making sure that we're tracking every dollar and making sure that our programs are actually achieving the outcomes that we desire.
Thank you. Kathy?
24.20, 245.5 million dollars is coming into this city. So therefore, how is that money going to help youth and children? How is it going to help renters and homeowners? Are we going to have a youth center? Our young people right now, if you are between the ages of 15 and 18, where do you go? There is no place where, that you can actually go, no place. Are we going to, how are we going to address public safety? 75% of white homeowners versus 25% of homeowners are black. How are you going to bridge the disparity between white and black homeowners? Let's be real, Minneapolis has been ranked number five for years as being the worst place for black Americans to live. How are you going to address that? And I want to tell you, we need a plan of action for that 245 million dollars that is coming into the city. What is going to be done with that money to address the needs and disparities of this community? We face the worst disparities in this community than any other city across the state.
Thank you. Victor?
I echo that. Think of it, over a quarter of a billion dollars in the city, over a quarter of a billion dollars in the county, 1.120 million from the school, that's a lot of money. There is no plan. When I talked to Al Bangor, the superintendent for the park board, he said, "Victor, I've had the same level of funding for youth programming for the last 20 years." Think about that. When our young people lack opportunities during the summer, when the crime is the highest with our young people, there's a problem with that. I believe in a youth development fund. I believe that we need to resource our coaches out here. Why is it a coach here get paid $300, and a coach in Idana gets paid $5,000? Are our kids worth less? The city needs to put their money where their mouth is.
Thank you. Kristel?
I believe city councils should be focused on working with Northside developers to create affordable rental and homeownership opportunities for families. We just lost six apartments at Plymouth Avenue Townhomes last week in a fire, with those families having nowhere to go. How are these kids learning in school right now? We need to invest in after-school programming, partnering schools, neighborhood associations, parks, and churches. Youth benefits so much by building relationships with each other and the adults in this community. We need to continue to start investing in these programs, and we need to invest in them heavily.
Thank you. Elijah, or Jeremiah?
The original question was about education, right? Correct?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. I wanted to make sure. So we don't have a direct say in how, in how public dollars get spent on education, but here's a few things that we can do. One is that we can, we can help stabilize students who are facing homelessness or housing instability, and we created Stable Homes, Stable Schools for that exact purpose, and we've been stabilizing thousands of students in the last two years. The program's only been around for that long through that program. I think that we can, we need to partner and promote partnerships between schools and job training and job creation centers, which is one of the things that I've been working on with folks like Jimette Staples and others, to make sure that we can have green energy jobs, and we can have Northside students getting access to those green energy jobs. And so you can see his center getting up and active on Plymouth Avenue. And then lastly, I think that we do need opportunities for our, for our local entrepreneurs to own the corridors so that kids can get employed by people who live in this neighborhood, and you're seeing some of that happening. You're seeing some of your neighbors buying up buildings on the corridor, so.
Thank you. Okay, our next question is around rent stabilization and rent control. Are you in support of or opposed to the Use of Tenant Opportunity to Purchase Act, or TOPA, and/or rent stabilization or rent control? Kathy, you are first.
You know, I've thought about this a long time. Am I for rent control? You know what, you know what I'm for? I'm for rent subsidy. There's a bill right now called Heading Home Now in Minnesota, Heading Home Now Minnesota, and it's in the House, and I support that. I need more understanding about rent control and how the city of Minneapolis would put a plan together to implement rent control for landlords. So I am sitting on the fence with that, but I am for rent subsidy, because a lot of our families that live, like in the Jordan neighborhood, that 30% of them make less than $15,000 a year, let me tell you something, I don't need a rent subsidy. What I need is, I need some help. I need help so that I can pay the rent, so I can buy gas for my car, so I can get on the bus, I can buy food. That's what I need. So a rent subsidy may help those particular families, because 40% of the families that live in Jordan and Hawthorne, they actually make less than $30,000 a year. So how is rent subsidy going to help them? It will help them make a difference in their lives. That's really what I support right now.
Thank you. Victor?
I do not support rent control. I don't think we need it. If you look historically the last 16 years, rent has increased on average about 2%, less than 2%. They're talking about 3%. Now, I will say this as well, there are some parts of our community where landlords are being abusive to the people, where they're raising rent $200, just like that. But there is other landlords that are really good. The City View Apartments, where we've done work with, how 20% of the Latinos in this zip code live right there. She tells me, "Victor, I haven't raised rent in like two years, and if you guys do these things, I'm going to be forced to go up to that 3% that you guys are recommending." The city has rental licenses for a reason. This council could have come down on an ax with these landlords or these landlords that are abusing the community, and they have that power. Why hasn't it been done? Why aren't we getting the results? Why are we only getting excuses?
Thank you. Kristel?
Well, actually, it's going to be the community that's going to decide on whether this will happen or not. You guys get to vote in November on whether this passes. So if you guys want it, then what I have been, this is how I could see it would work, after talking to Northside constituents, they have said that if this passes, and if this is what the community wants, that we need to focus on seniors, families, and youth. So what would it look like if we identified a percentage of the 300 properties in North Minneapolis that are empty, and allocated them for rent control? You know, but also making it toward, to the landlords currently that have a rental license would not have to opt in, they would be grandfathered in. But if they don't want it, there's things that we need to set in place to make sure that people don't get displaced, like offering renters the first right of refusal when a single-family home is being sold, because let's face it, most of our rental properties are single-family homes in North Minneapolis.
Thank you. Jeremiah?
Yeah, one minute's going to be hard. This is, this is really like my area. So one, one I want to say is that unrelated to TOPA and rent stabilization, is one of the first things I did when I got in office was do a rewrite of how we do housing inspections, which I could go really into, but essentially, we're able to hold landlords accountable while still stabilizing that tenant and not putting that tenant out onto the street. And so we did that through RAC Services. I'm authoring both Tenant Opportunity to Purchase or Right of First Refusal, as Kristel put it, and I'm also authoring the amendment that would bring rent stabilization to the ballot. Rent stabilization is going to happen in two phases because of state law. One is, you know, people, the people of Minneapolis are going to give us permission, "Do you want the city to have this as an option?", right? We're not going to pass an actual policy. We're going to ask the question, "Do the people of Minneapolis want this to be an option?" Then Phase Two, because of state law, will be us actually passing the policy. And so I'm for, I'm for us asking the question, "Should we have this", and I do think that the policy would help many people in our city. And I'm for Tenant Opportunity to Purchase as well.
Thank you. Elijah?
Yes, I'm deliberate over this question a lot, actually, and my consensus is I do not support rent stabilization. But ultimately, the voters are going to decide in November, as Kristel pointed out. I believe that we're going to, we're continuously kicking the can down the street, and I try not to do that. I think we need to pick it up. And by, what I mean by that is, we need to create programs, opportunities, education for people to become homeowners, right? I want black people to own a home. It would be very straightforward, right? Black people need to own homes. Stop renting. You're not going to generate wealth that way. You're not going to be to pass any assets down to your children that way. So when will city council members, our leadership, step up and start educating our people about what it means to actually generate wealth in a community? That's how you do it. That's the first step, owning home. I own property. My parents own property. That education was passed down to me. But if no one's passing the education down to you, you're not going to understand it. So I would like to use my platform as city council member to educate my people about home ownership.
Thank you. The next question is also about housing, and it says, "Describe your approach to increasing affordable housing in the north side, and how would you protect affordable, single-family homes from real estate development?" And Victor, you go first.
I don't think that when our council says that we have affordable housing for the north side, that it is actually affordable. I don't believe that is honest for our community. I want you to think about this. 97% of the new housing in the last seven years has been one and two bedrooms. Latinos, African-Americans, Native Americans, Somali, mom, we average about three children per family. We need an average three whole, three apartment, three bedrooms per apartment. 95% of them have been one or two bedrooms. Think about that. Is the city being developed for our community, or is it developed for a different community here in Minneapolis? And so I have a problem with that, and I agree with Elijah 110%. If you don't empower the communities that struggle the most, if you don't give them the wealth resources and opportunities, we don't want them to be renting, we want them to own their home, we want them to stabilize their family. I'm the first one in my family to buy a home, and every member of my family has been in my basement at one point or another when they're homeless, sick, or unemployed.
Thank you. Kristel?
We need to work with community organizations and allow Northside developers to access TIF funding. Oftentimes, we see developers outside of our community be able to access that to build affordable housing for our community, and let's face it, most of it's subpar, made out of very crappy materials, and not taken care of and not maintained. So I, I support TIF funding, TIF districts, and supporting Northside developers, working with community organizations, neighborhood associations that have NRP funds from TIF districts, so that we can start developing not just affordable rental property, but also affordable homeownership models, and make it to where they get enough down payment assistance to where they can afford to pay that monthly mortgage payment every single month.
Thank you. Jeremiah?
Thank you. I think there's a couple of different ways for us to approach affordable housing, and I think the main one is that we need to be, we need to have someone who's going to promote the building of affordable housing, and for a long time in the north side, we did not have that. I've been somebody who has advocated for the building of affordable housing, and we've gotten hundreds of units built. I wish I had enough time to list out the actual properties, because I could, I could do so. I also want to prop up Tenant Opportunity to Purchase as a pathway to home ownership. It gives you first right to buy that home. So it's also a way for us to push back on these real estate giants who are buying up a lot of homes. Tenant Opportunity Purchase is a pathway for that, especially if we have it not only for multifamily housing, but for single unit, for single-family housing, which is what the current proposal would, would have. And so I think, you know, another thing that we have to do is, you talk about subsidy, we have to put our subsidy into deeper forms of affordability. That means coming down to 30%, and it doesn't mean that everything has to be 30%, but we do need to build 30% because the area median income for this region has gone up by about $10,000 in the last three years. And so what people are making is, is, yeah, so what people are paying is more and more.
Thank you. Elijah?
Yes, I think affordable housing needs to be dispersed evenly and equitably across the city. North Minneapolis should not be taking the bulk of the affordable housing developments that are taking place in our city. That's the quickest way to concentrate poverty, and we also know when you do that, it also leads to increased crime, so I just want to put that out there. The second thing is, I want to encourage black people, people of color that live in this community to own their homes, even if that means expanding opportunities for rent-to-home options for people who don't have the down deposits to actually pay upfront to get their, to get a loan from the banks, right? Then how so do we form partnerships with the banks and other lenders to help our community members have access and pathways to getting homes?
Thank you. Kathy?
I support affordable housing, but there's so many differences of how, about how people describe affordable housing. And so I believe also in mixed-use housing as well. We talk so much about the right to buy, and I hear that. It is not that easy just to wake up one day and say, "Oh, I'm going to go buy a house." So I believe also in education. We have to educate people on what it takes to buy a home, because everybody's not ready to buy a home. So therefore, I do support affordable housing, and I do support rental subsidy, because it is a pathway for people to say, "I want to be in that position one day where I can purchase a home and be stabilized." I believe in housing stabilization, because that is fundamentally how people are stable and successful. You've got to be stable in your home, in your housing, and know that you're not going to be displaced. So that, I support affordable housing.
Thank you. All right, our next question is, "Give me an example of when, give our audience an example of when you have disagreed with someone, and were you still able to work with them or work together with them?" And Kristel, you start.
I think that happens every single day for me, probably because I'm out here in the community all the time. You know, honestly, in any of the times that I've disagreed with someone, it never is, it's never a time where we're like, "Oh, we can't, we can't move forward, and we can't get something done together." I love it when people disagree with me, because then I learn something new that I didn't know before, and that's good. And I think that's one of the problems that we have right now in our local city government is it's all on one side. We don't have a mixture of people that think different things and come from different backgrounds and faiths and cultures. And I think that, you know, we, you know, if somebody disagrees with me, it's not a big deal. We could still work for, we could work together.
Okay, thank you. Jeremiah?
Thank you for that. Thank you for the question. You know, I work with folks that I disagree with all the time. Folks might know Lisa Goodman, who's on the city council. You know, I was on the phone with her the other day, and we talked about how we often will be voting on the opposite side of an issue. But I remember when I first got into office and I was dealing with this Mach Mucan issue, and she didn't think that the solutions that we were coming up with for the con tenants were going to work out. But we talked through it, and we built some consensus, and we moved forward, and now we've got a number of people in the Mach Mucan portfolio who are now owning their homes, where they previously were seen as sort of nearly untenable tenants even. Now they're homeowners. I'll also talk about the mayor. I know that, I know that the public narrative might be one thing, but even a program that's being proposed for ARP dollars, the Community Safety Specialist, is a program that's coming out of this neighborhood. We're working together on bringing that, that program to fruition, and so definitely able to work with people that I disagree with.
Elijah?
Yeah, having been an entrepreneur and someone who's worked for my family since the age of 14 in my dad's multiple businesses, we got into many disagreements. I have a very strong personality, and I choose not to partake in the Minnesota nice culture, as some of you probably have picked up on. So I disagree with people a lot, but I think my ability to see different sides of a situation, to allow people space, to give me their perspective, and my willingness to remove emotion from my responses and I address and tackle issues has been a very great tool for me to push forward, to move forward, to collaborate, and to come up with formidable solutions with people, even if we don't agree by the way. I believe that we can find common interest and a common ground, and I'm willing to compromise when necessary.
Thank you. Kathy?
I am a team player. But on June 7th of 2020, when Jeremiah Ellison and the other seven or eight council members stood up and said they wanted to dismantle and defund the Minneapolis Police Department, that is where I divided part my ways with Jeremiah. I respect him, I honor him and his family. When my mom died, they were the first to actually call me and give their condolences to me and my family. But the one thing about having an either-or approach that causes chaos is that that's what it does. It causes chaos. I am about a both-and approach. There's a collaborative approach. I can still work with Jeremiah. I can still support some of his ideas, but that is where we parted ways, because I don't believe in dismantling and defunding our police department. I didn't believe in removing the Crime Prevention Specialist from the police department into the NCR department, moving the navigators into the NCR department, because they do community work, and they need the police department as a collaborative model.
Okay, thank you. Victor?
I'm about my first house, my current house, eight years ago, and we had six problem homes. And we all know those problem houses. There's shootings, there's parties really late, drug selling, all that, right? We had six homes, and I became the block leader, and I began to unify the block. We began to work with those homeowners, work with the police, try to call them. I was the guy that would knock on the window of a car and say, "Hey, are you lost? Can I help you find directions?" And we were down after eight years, we're down to one last problem house, one last one. They were mad at me, I was the bad guy. I said, "Hey, we care about your kids, we don't want your kids to get shot. We know, you know, you guys aren't causing the problem to some of the people that are coming with you." And last year, after eight, after three years of investment, they invited over my family- And last year, after eight, after three years of investment, they invited over my family, my kids to their birthday party for the first time. That's not sexy, it's not gonna make national headlines, but that's what you do. You find consensus, you work with people that are difficult to work with and you bring it together and figure it out.
Thank you. Okay, the next one is about the Blue Line extension. Uh, several questions were raised regarding, uh, how to support the community during the expansion of the Blue Line into North Minneapolis. Uh, what protections can the city put in place to avoid the displacement of small businesses and residents along the line as property values rise and they can no longer afford rents or property taxes? Jeremiah.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Uh, you know, one of the things that I've put a lot of effort into is drafting a lot of the city's anti-displacement work. Uh, and so that, that involves affordable housing, it involves programs, it involves policy, uh, but it also involves the, the design of the line itself. I think that this, if the city really wants to, uh, we have some, some displacement policies in place. We have, uh, a right to return policy that, that allows people who have been displaced, uh, for any reason in North Minneapolis to have some preference when it comes to buying or renting, uh, that, that policy's passed. Uh, but I also think that it's important that the city and the county and the state put together an acquisition fund to, that puts us in a better position, uh, to, to, to have site control on the corridor and pass that on to the community. Uh, it, we've, we've had some success with that through the Commercial Property Development Fund and I think that we need to collaborate with the state and county, um, to, to make sure that we can take that, that program, uh, uh, to a much bigger scale.
Elijah.
Having had the privilege to live in St. Paul prior to the development of the Green Line, um, I think having a large scale development project like that for transportation, it could be very destructive to, to a lot of the businesses that are on that corridor. For months, um, we saw a lot of St. Paul businesses being shut down. There was lack of access to their businesses and a lot of them had to go out of business. They weren't able to, to keep the doors open. So I, I believe that we should expand funding opportunities if we do choose to go through with this project to make sure our small businesses aren't being displaced, that they're being properly supported during the construction period and trying to make sure that we're developing this thing in a way that allows access to businesses. So we're not doing it all at one time, but we're just kind of sectioning it out so we can make sure people can still access the very important small businesses that are on the West Broadway corridor. Um, I believe that we should also look at alternatives to building a Blue Line. What about a trolley that goes from downtown through North Minneapolis? That's smaller, more convenient, it doesn't require as much construction as a, an actual light rail development and we can still have proper transportation for our people in the community.
Thank you. Kathy.
I am a bus rider. I take the nineteen, the five, the ninety-four, the light, the green, the Blue Line. I love, love public transportation and I want to see, uh, the Blue Line come to North Minneapolis, but listen, it's a billion dollar project. They can't get from Target Field to Crystal or Robbinsdale or Brooklyn Center without the input of North Minneapolis residents. This is our time, the time is now, we need to make decisions. Where do you want it to go? Do you want it to go down West Broadway? Do you want it to go down Lowry? Do you want it to go down Washington? This is your opportunity to decide what do you want transportation to look like in your community and also where do families go? It's going to displace businesses, neighborhoods, it's going to disrupt our community. So what do we do? We need a plan that looks at displacement and we need funding.
Thank you. Victor.
The Blue Line is either gonna go down Broadway or it's gonna go down Lowry. And everybody's voice here needs to be heard loud and clear. I've been working with businesses on the cor, business corridor about their fears of Broadway. I've been talking to businesses on Lowry about their fears. There needs to be funding. I asked them about the funding that, that there is available for, uh, for displacement or for being able to help these businesses get through these couple of years of construction. And it was very low, what, two thousand, three thousand dollars just to make a door in the back? That's not good. The problem is even bigger. Our current city council supports a twenty forty plan that actually says they're gonna make it harder for people to drive. North Minneapolis has the highest concentration of families. Guess who drives the most? Families. Are you pushing the families out? Were you saying we're eliminating parking, we need everybody to bike or transportation through light rail? I love it, I bike myself, but our families, they depend on vehicles and if they can't get to a business on Broadway, they won't be shopping there. That's one of my concerns, make sure their voices are being heard and when they're gonna plan it, when they're gonna put it down, we make sure that our voices are a hundred percent heard and our businesses, our homegrown businesses are taken care of one hundred percent.
Thank you. Kristel.
If we are not careful, we will repeat history on this one. Road construction has displaced black communities over and over again throughout history. We could end up with another rondo on West Broadway. I have actually been attending these meetings and a lot of the loudest voices in these meetings are nonprofits. Nonprofits do well when their communities do bad. But what I don't see in these meetings are the for-profits that are not invited to these spaces. North Minneapolis does not, or North Minneapolis does need a light rail and the community needs to have a real seat at the table on this one. If we decide for it to go on Broadway or on Lowry, we need to make sure that the businesses that are in those spaces are given the proper funding needed to temporarily relocate them during those three years that it will take for the development to happen and give them the funding they need to acquire property back in the space where the light rail is supposed to go.
Thank you. Okay, the next question is about the Upper Harbor Terminal. The Upper Harbor Terminal is a mixed use redevelopment project along the riverfront in North Minneapolis with the park board, the city and the outside investors involved in the evolution. The neighbors would like to know, um, would like to see Northside residents and businesses, owners benefit as well as the greater city. What can be done to see that it serves and benefits the local community and businesses rather than resulting in visitors driving through the neighborhood to the development itself? Elijah, you go first.
Yeah, requiring that a majority of the businesses or at least a percentage of the businesses that are gonna be operating out of the North Harbor Terminal is actually gonna be from the North Side and I would prefer them to be black owned to, to be frank. Um, I think that'll be the best approach to take, that our young people are gonna have access to jobs and opportunities there all the way from the construction to being, you know, working in the, the amphitheater, um, once it's created and developed there and not just for fifteen dollars an hour, right? They need livable wage jobs, they need opportunities to grow and also have their own, um, bre, uh, restaurants, stores, um, shops there as well. They need to have access to the North Harbor, our Upper Harbor Terminal.
Kathy.
The Upper Harbor Terminal, we know there's some environmental issues that are happening up there right now and so it needs to be cleaned up first and foremost. Northern metals, we know notorious in our community, GAF need to be gone. But here's the deal, how does the Upper Harbor Terminal benefit communities in this neighborhood? Number one, I can't even get to the north, uh, the Upper Harbor Terminal. So transportation is definitely an issue. And then we also need to realize, how does it economically benefit us? How does it? Twenty million dollars has been put up there for the venue, for the, so, so how does it benefit us? What type of jobs will be there? What type of businesses will be there? What type of opportunities will we have as a community to have access to what is up there currently? Will our children have access? There's a performing arts center that they're looking at building. How do we access those services and how do we have input of how they are designed? Are they designed with us in mind? We have to think in terms of that.
Thank you. Victor.
Between the freeway, the Upper Harbor Terminal and the li, light rail, we're looking at the largest investment in history probably in the North Side. And if we don't position our businesses on day one, when they open the Upper Harbor Terminal and those businesses are ready for, to bring in, to bring in restaurants, if the Northside businesses are not ready on day one, they will pass them over and then move over to franchises. So my thing, my question is, what are, what can we do now as a city council to begin to prepare and educate and support the corridor that are trying to survive and have a business so they can be ready for three years from now? Because if they're not ready, they're gonna be passed over. I also say that we, the downtown Minneapolis was getting ready, positioning themselves with the parking. They're looking at getting the parking and ha, had, have people go up to the Upper Harbor Terminal when North Minneapolis has the opportunity to, to make financial gains through business, transportation, all of that. We're, we're so close, are the North Side to benefit a hundred percent from all the benefits that it's gonna come to in that region.
Kristel.
Um, ac, actually after speaking with Northside constituents, uh, they would actually like to see clean and beautiful natural spaces, which would allow them access to the river for the first time in history. Um, they also would like job creation and are tired of having to leave their community to work. We just received an environmental review on Friday and there was a lot missing such as a cumulative and GAF impact review. I don't know about you, but if you live near there, the smell is unbearable. We need to make sure that Northside businesses are there to create the jobs that our community wants and needs. And I don't, I don't know about you, but I, I'd like to see a hotel, um, that could provide an opportunity for visitors to come and, and support local artists, um, that would also provide entry level all the way to upper management jobs.
Thank you. Jer, uh, Jeremiah.
Uh, I do want to echo that this project absolutely needs to be a catalyst for access to the river for North Minneapolis residents. I remember, uh, uh, a while ago, when we were getting a re, passed a certain phase of the plan, a lot of folks reached out to me and they said, look, you know, we're, we're not satisfied with where this project is right now. And I asked, I asked a group of folks point blank, I said, do you want me to kill this project? And the universal consensus was, no, but we need some major changes on this project. And so, uh, one of those major changes is that instead of selling the land, we're gonna, the, 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 the land is gonna stay in public ownership. I think that that's a big deal. But when we talk about how the North Side's gonna benefit, I think that we, you know, we need to start talking about, um, you know, how, how's, how our North Side is going to own some of that land. Folks talk about building relationships with banks, that's great, but also banks are a big part of the reason that our businesses have a lack of access to capital. And so I think we need to lean into some municipal financing, we need to be willing as a city to take some more financial risk on our businesses so that they can own, uh, the space, uh, in, uh, whether it's the, the integrated utility hub or some of the, uh, uh, some of the business storefronts, uh, up on that property.
Okay, thank you. Um, boy, we have about twenty more questions and I can, if you're like me, you're not gonna make it through twenty more questions because it's getting cold up here. So I'm gonna ask the last question, which is an environmental question and then we will go to final, final statements. Um, s, some members of the Homeowners Association and Heritage Park would like to see more sustainable spaces created specifically through pollinator gardens and replacement of grass with native ground cover. What are your views on this kind of environmental action? Kathy, you go first.
Uh, at Jordanary Community Council, we just did a partnership with a group that does edible gardens. Um, we're going to be introducing that to Jordan, uh, neighborhood, neighbors and residents. We believe that gardening and green space can be used more, I say creatively. So I think that that's one approach that we're going to be using is trying to really look at how can renters and, and, and homeowners use their spaces more creatively? That's one approach that we are using right now.
Thank you. Victor.
One of the biggest things I'm proud is, I'm proud is of in North Minneapolis is serving on NERC for seven, uh, six years. Uh, with John Jamison, we were able to recruit an amazing team of, uh, an executive director and I'm not sucking up to them because they're here right now. But we were able to put a team together to build NERC's first headquarters in its forty-plus year history. Think about that. And that building is not just a building, it is an example to the community of how you can be sustainable, environmentally friendly. We have a water, I don't know, I don't know the names of these things very well, but they got this big thing, you put water in it from the roof, okay? And you could use it and they're looking, we were looking at putting it inside the house where we could actually drink it. You got chickens in the back, you got, uh, a field in the back, like we're trying to create that. Well, not anymore because I'm not in there, but I would help as city council to do everything I can to help them to set that building to be an example for this, for the North Side that yes, we could have these awesome, cool, weird looking things that benefits us a lot.
Kristel.
Pollinator-friendly gardens are a great way to combat climate change. Um, I, I do agree with Victor. I served on the NERC board and I was actually one of the, uh, people who thought of, uh, putting the headquarters there on that corner. I am also somebody who, uh, helped put in that stormwater, um, garden, that rainwater garden and I helped hook up the water pump for the cistern that is on the side of the building, which will be going into the building to flush toilets, which is, um, a gray water system, which is what we need to have throughout the city. Um, when we have pollinator-friendly gardens, it also addresses stormwater runoff, which would end up otherwise in our streets and down our stormwater drains in the river and the water, the river can't sustain that much water. It's not supposed to and that's actually where we get our water from that goes into our homes. So we need to make sure, and I will make sure, that once I get onto city council, that we will focus on water, urban water sensitive land design for every single property in Minneapolis.
Thank you. Jeremiah.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I, I, I think, uh, in short, I'll concur, I think that this is really important. I think that we need these, this kind of infrastructure, this kind of green infrastructure. We need pollinator-friendly gardens as well. Um, and, uh, you know, to that end, not only am I working to try to create, uh, uh, more sustainability in how we're building our buildings and our homes, uh, but also trying to work with, uh, a lot of our, uh, some of our local entrepreneurs to, to make sure that, that, uh, that, that they get those investments. Uh, worked with several, uh, uh, businesses to make sure that they get those investments in that rainwater collection. I also think it's important, uh, that we take our current gardening system, you know, you've got some folks on the North Side who garden just for fun and when, when it's time to build a house on that garden plot, they're fine, just totally letting it go. But we also have some pretty involved gardens where folks are subsisting off of, off of, off of that land and I think it's really important that we modify our current system to make sure, uh, that we have dedicated space for that purpose, uh, whether it be, uh, whether it be pollinator-friendly gardens or whether it be, you know, basically, almost like, you know, subsisting off that farming. Um, uh, I think that I want to create, uh, a home for that kind of, uh, for that kind of activity.
Thank you. Elijah.
Yeah, I echo, um, all of the viewpoints and positions of the other candidates. Um, I think we need to have more green spaces, pollinator gardens. Um, I believe that we should also consider making a program out of this where we're teaching young people, um, in the middle schools and the high schools also how to garden and also how to be sustainable. I think we also need to take a look at the West Broadway corridor, some of those parking, or those empty lots, right? They're vacant lots that we see so many of and figuring out how to make those better, um, more beautiful spaces for our residents and people who visit our community to enjoy also.
Thank you. We've now come to the end of our time for questions. I know we have many of you who wanted to have your questions answered and I only want to encourage you to call each of the candidates, um, individually and talk to them about their thoughts if you have a burning question. Now the, uh, candidates will give their closing remarks and I'm going to use two of the questions and hope that you'll maybe address these in your closing remarks. What will be your main issues that you will prioritize if you are elected as the fifth board representative? And since we are using ranked choice voting, how will you ask voters who are not selecting you as their first candidate to put you as their second or third? And this, we'll begin with Victor.
Our city council is extremely divided right now. We're looking at having possibly the worst summer in recent history when it comes to shootings and murders. Three children just got shot in the head in three, in two weeks. One of them has now since died. If this city council does not find consensus with the mayor here soon, we're getting close to really demanding a state of emergency for the North Side. Someone told me, Victor, what are you waiting for? Are you waiting for another kid to get shot? And then he said to me, Victor, it could be your kid. And I have a five-year-old, six-year-old and that's what made me upset. We don't want to wait till another kid gets shot. We're asking for the city council mayor to come together. And I will say this, I love Elijah, I love his heart, I love Kathy, I love her, I love her heart, I like Kristel. And I think that right now there's a big difference between me and the incumbent right now and I support these three other candidates to be your second, third and fourth choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kristel.
So yeah, um, you know, I, if somebody, if I'm talking to anybody in the community and they, um, say that they support somebody else, then of course I'm gonna ask them to pick me as their second choice, but, uh, the reality is, is, you know, these are all my neighbors, you know? They all actually have good hearts and they're all good people, otherwise they wouldn't be doing this work. And, you know, I, if I, to be honest, if I was not running right now, I would be voting for Kathy Spann. So I'm just going to say that right now. But... So I, a lot of you guys know me. You know me. I have served in this community my entire life. I have given so many hours away from my children to do the things that I've done here. I have founded Clean City Youth, which employed 75 youth to learn about the environment. I started Cycle Sisters, which supports local businesses and gets women outside on their bikes to get to know each other and their children to get to know each other. I've gotten 150 households to switch to renewable energy and get energy audits and installations, which our houses in North Minneapolis are dilapidated. I'm working with North High School right now to create a pathway. I'm speaking in front of the classes at North High School to make sure that they have a pathway to get to Jemez Staples Education Center so that we can create jobs within the fastest-growing market in the world right now. I hope you guys know that I'm going to do my best to make sure that all of you guys are represented. I'm going to work with you.
Thank you. Jeremiah?
Thank you. You know, I'm born and raised in this community as well. Born and raised on the north side, grew up working at, being a lifeguard, working at Avenue for Homeless Youth, working at Juxta. And, you know, I think that it takes a lot to do this job and it takes a lot to get things done. The number one issue that we're facing right now, quite frankly, is a gun violence crisis. That's true. I was talking to Resmaa Ahmed Kim, who's a brilliant academic, but also one of your neighbors here. And he was talking, he was talking about how gun violence and police violence are not mutually exclusive. It's not, they're not one or the other. They are in fact the same thing. Because when you have a system that is supposed to keep people safe, that does not have any credibility, it cannot keep people safe. We need to solve that problem. We need to fix that problem. I also want to, I also want to say that I'm thinking about and have been at the prayer circles and the vigils for folks, for these kids in the past couple of weeks, La Davion, Jr., Trinity, and Anaya. And it is the number one issue that we have to solve today, but it is inextricably linked to our policing issue as well. But we can't just attack the problem, the immediate crisis. If we want to prevent it from happening in the future, we have to go upstream. We have to grab these issues at the root. And that does mean that we have to go ahead and we have to make sure that there are access to job training. And I've done that work. We have to make sure that we have housing stability. And I'm doing that work. And I want to talk about it more with you all. We have to make sure that the businesses in our community can buy buildings on the corridor and I'm doing that work. And so that's why I want to continue serving with you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Elijah?
Yes, for those who joined us late and was not able to attend the introduction part of tonight's forum, my name is Elijah Norris. You can contact my campaign at www.e-45.com. And I would prioritize making sure that opportunities and success are more accessible than a gun and a pound of weed. I do agree with Councilman Ellison. The number one issue right now that we are facing in this community, from my perspective, is gun violence. But until we actually have the honest conversation about how we're going to put dollars into bank accounts, dollars into pockets for young people, the thousands of them, Victor pointed out earlier, 20,000 young people live in this community. What opportunities, what pathways for success are we creating and leaving behind for them? How are we going to make sure that our residents, who are renters, have education, opportunities to own their homes? I believe when we have a community who owns their homes, they take better care of it. We have a lot of people in this community who are just renters. They need to have a stake in ownership in this community. How do we create pathways for that? How do we form better relationships with Chief Arredondo, our mayor, other city council members to make sure we're properly supporting the people in our community? And when I say community, I'm talking outside of Northside Minneapolis. I'm talking about the entire city of Minneapolis. There's too much divisiveness. There's too much self-righteous, self-serving, arrogant council members right now serving our community or not serving our community in my perspective. We need to make city council simple again. We need to implement the Ward Five Comprehensive Plan. We got community members and stakeholders are a part of. And you guys can help us identify first-year, five-year, 10-year goals and objectives that we want to accomplish from the very start. And I can use that as an accountability tool to make sure that I'm sticking to the plan that you all helped me create. Again, my name is Elijah Norris. You can reach out to my campaign at www.e-45.com or add me on Facebook at Elijah Norris. My number is 651-734-3163. Again, 651-734-3163. Give me a call.
Kathy?
I'm not mad at Elijah. I am really privileged to be up here with some great people. And I love you guys, each one of you. And I want to tell you this. I want your vote, but I would vote for Kristel and I would vote for Victor as the second choice. But I want to tell you this. We're in a crisis right now. And be the change that you want to see. Don't put us up on a pedestal. Don't think we're going to know everything and do everything right because we're not. It's a two-year position. So let's get real about this. My priorities would be two things. We need to stop this gun violence so it's public safety. And then the second thing is really, we need jobs, 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 jobs in this community. But no businesses are going to come here until we stop the crime that's in our community. I'm afraid in my house. I'm afraid walking the streets. But I'm going to tell you this. I am a, I have a proven track record. So if you want a leader that has a proven track record at Jordanary Community Council, I started the Take a Stand Ceasefire. We did the truth about drugs to address the opiate epidemic. So you need to pick a leader that has a proven track record that can get stuff done. From day one, I worked at City Hall as a public aid, policy aide. So from day one, I can hit the ground running. This is no game. We ain't out here playing no game. Our lives are at stake. And so don't look at us and put us up on a pedestal because the reality is, it is going to take all of us to change this community, all of us. I want to be your first choice, your only choice. But once again, Kristel and Victor, your second choice.
Thank you very much. And that's the end of our question period tonight and our final comments. I do want to thank Erin Harvey and Marilyn Cantusano from The League for organizing this forum. And I want to give a special shout out to Martine Smaller, who made this beautiful stage with the flowers and the water. And it's really beautiful. Thank you so much. I also want to thank MCN6 for videotaping this. And you will be able to see it again on The League website soon, I believe. Thank you to everybody who came tonight and sat out there on the cold grass. Who would have guessed it was going to be so cold? So really, to the audience. And thank you to those of you who send in questions. And I again apologize, we didn't get to all of them. But coming to another one, I'm sure they will probably have another forum. And last and most importantly, don't forget to vote on November 2nd. We do not have a primary this year, so you will be voting for these candidates on November 2nd. Early voting starts on September 17th and this election is, as you, as you know, ranked choice voting. Your, your vote can be sent in either by mail or in person. Thank you.
Thank you.